Good afternoon, we'll call to order the February 21st meeting of the Santa Barbara's Planning Commission. Mr. Rodriguez, if you would be so kind to take role.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge. Absent. Commissioner Campanella.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Chair Jordan.
Here. First item up for business today is a review of the draft minutes of February 7th, 2013, and the resulting resolution. Why don't we work through any of the changes to both of those, and then we'll just look for one motion to approve both. So, any changes or corrections on the minutes? Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the minutes of February 7th, again, same comments as at our last meeting, please correct the spelling of my name under the motion, item 2-2?
That's it.
Any others? And anything in the resolution? Perfect. I'll entertain a motion, then.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so these would be both on the draft minutes and the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstained?
Yes, I need to abstain on the draft minutes of February 7th and the resolution 002-13.
Thank you. Mr. Cato, any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
None of those things.
Announcements or appeals?
Yes, I have one announcement. So, on April 17th, which is a Wednesday, the Planning Commission will be having a joint meeting, a discussion meeting with the City Council. It's their semi-annual meeting to discuss the workload of the Planning Division. That'll be held in the David Gephardt Room down at 6:30 Garden Street from 9:00 to 11:30. So, that's my only announcement for today.
Okay, thanks. And then, is there any public comments, slips turned in?
Not for the general part.
For items not on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll note that and move past that. First item today is a consent item, Bethel Environmental Solutions on the airport property regarding cleanup of contaminated soil and groundwater. The approval we're being asked to consider is a Goleta Slough Coastal Development Permit. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that, we move the consent item forward in waiving the staff report, so that we can address questions and comments by the commission.
Well, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Then it's to the commission for questions and discussion. Ms. Pujol.
I have just a couple of small comments that I would like to bring up. The fir-, and these are on the conditions of approval for it, just two small things. On item B on the first page of the conditions, I would just recommend that we waive a phrase, delete a phrase from that first paragraph B, because it states that the owner shall submit the following, and it gives a list, some of these conditions, and then it says, "May be waived for demolition or rough grading permits." Since the entire project is grading, I don't think it's necessary to include a waiver that would basically waive all the conditions of the project at discretion. So, I would suggest that we remove that phrase. And then also, when I was reviewing the conditions, I couldn't find, in the draft conditions, a reference to where the excavated soil was going to be brought to. And I would suggest that we include, either into an existing condition or as a standalone item, a reference that any excavated materials be brought to an appropriate state or federal-approved disposal facility.
Okay, I think we probably got an answer for both of those. Mr. Cato?
Thank you, Chair Jordan. So, yes, for the first one, that's fine. These are, this is a template condition, and normally, we would, I mean, it's part of our, this language is part of the normal template, and it's not a problem to delete it for this one. In a lot of cases, in like, normal projects, where there's grading and construction, we don't, sometimes you don't put all of these conditions on the grading part, because we know where it's coming later. As to the second part, the reason there is no condition is because the disposal of the contaminated soil is strictly regulated by state and federal law. In fact, I believe Paul McCaw's here from County Fire, we had a conversation just a little while ago, where he said, "It's controlled by County Fire, there are strict federal and state laws about where they have to go." And, well, to summarize, because it's not hazardous, I guess oil and petroleum products are not considered hazardous. It can go to Santa Maria, or other fill locations that are approved for petroleum soil. If it was hazardous, have to go someplace different, like near Kettleman City, there's a specific place for that. So, again, it's to the pleasure of the commission, if we could add it, if it's to the pleasure of the commission, we could add a condition that puts another layer of conditioning on it. The reason we didn't is because it is already covered, and we don't usually put additional, we don't put conditions that are already covered by existing laws into the conditions.
Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable to me, yes.
And the sentence you were talking about in B is the one that starts some of these conditions? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Then, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the project as amended in the staff report.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Thank you. Does this need an appeal announcement, Danny? Okay, so this section is appealable to the city within 10 calendar days. Next item is a new item, the application of Raymond Appleton, agent for John Sherat, 2215 and 2305 Edgewater Way. It involves a host of improvements on the property and conformance repairs, a lot line adjustment, a pair of modifications for garage structures, a modification for landscaping, and a coastal development permit. Ms. Bradison?
Good afternoon, Chair Jordan, and members of the Planning Commission. The project I'm presenting today is a request for a lot line adjustment at a site at 2215 and 2305 Edgewater Way. Here's an aerial photo, and I've circled the sites in question. The surrounding neighborhood, oh, sorry, the project's site is located at the corner of Edgewater Way and Mohawk Road. See, the surrounding neighborhood consists of single-family residential development with the ocean bluff to the south. Here's a picture of the street frontage showing 2215 Edgewater to the left and 2305 Edgewater to the right. And here's a slide showing the rear yard. This is 2305 Edgewater to the left and 2215 Edgewater Way to the right. Here's a picture of the frontage along Mohawk Road. I can't The project's site is comprised of two lots divided by an east-west property line, the blue line here, and it's dividing the two lots, creating one bluff top lot to the right and one street frontage lot to the left. 2305 Edgewater Way fronting on the street is 11,264 square feet with an eight-and-a-half percent slope, average slope, and 2215 Edgewater Way is a 43,000 square foot bluff top lot with 57 percent slope. The project's site is located in the E3 zone, single-family residential zone, and the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The project description involves a lot line adjustment between the two lots, reorienting the dividing line from east-west to north-south, essentially creating two bluff top lots. And new Lot 1 will be 22,000 square feet with approximately 43-and-a-half percent slope, and new Lot 2 will be 31,375 square feet with approximately 50 percent slope. Construction on Lot 1 consists of a new two-car garage, and construction on new Lot 2, 2215 Edgewater Way, which is the corner lot, involves demolition of the existing carport, which we saw in the previous slide, and a new two-car garage with a basement and a new deck. The discretionary applications that are requested today are two front setback modifications for garage encroachments along Edgewater Way, a modification to allow an overheight hedge and gate within 10 feet of a property line along Mohawk, a lot line adjustment to reconfigure the lots, and a coastal development to allow the proposed development in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The development application review process included an environmental assessment, and as stated in the staff report, this project qualifies for an exemption under SEQA Guidelines Section 15305, which allows for minor lot adjustments where the building has an average slope of no more, where the building site has an average slope of no more than 20 percent. And for this exemption, building site is defined as the area actually proposed for development. The staff identified primary issues to review for this project, and they included setback modifications. Here's a slide showing the site plan for 2305 Edgewater Way. You can see in this zone, I've highlighted the front setback with blue here, the required front setback is 20 feet. As stated in the staff report, each of the newly adjusted lots is required to have two off-street parking spaces, and because of the angle of the property and the sighting of the existing structures on the site, the applicant is requesting a modification for a small corner of each of the new garages to encroach a small amount into the front The garage on Lot 1 will encroach approximately 2 feet 11 inches, a small corner of it here. And the garage on Lot 2 will encroach approximately 2 feet 7 inches into the front setback, and that's just a small corner here. As you can see on the site plans, the garages are pushed back as far as possible, therefore, staff can support this small amount of encroachment. The applicant is also requesting a modification to allow a new five-foot-tall hedge and entry gate to exceed three-and-a-half feet within front setback on Mohawk Road. By allowing the hedge to be at five feet high, the front yard on Mohawk will be shielded from oncoming traffic driving north on Edgewater Way, and the gate will act as the main entrance for the residents. The hedge will provide privacy on the lot with two front yards. In effect, the frontage acts as a secondary front yard, and therefore, staff can support the overheight fence in this location. It should be noted that the private property improvements do not create a visibility issue for traffic purposes or obstruct the public right-of-way. And also, again, as stated in the staff report, it is fairly standard to allow the secondary front yard of a corner lot to have a higher fence height or hedge height to allow for privacy for the property's backyard. Therefore, staff supports this modification. And then here's another slide showing the proposed property line. As it's existing now, it runs north-south, and the new line is the yellow line shown here that will create two bluff top lots. In this zone, E3, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet, which is, both of these properties are far exceeding that size, and the minimum street frontage is 60 feet on, is required for public street frontage. So, consistency with the general plan. The proposed project is compatible with its Mesa neighborhood and is consistent with the general plan designation of residential five units per acre. Single-family design board reviewed the proposed construction and found that the project is consistent with this pattern of single-family residential development. In order for a project to be consistent with the general plan, the project must also be found to be consistent with the circulation element. As such, the pedestrian master plan requires that a sidewalk curb and gutter be installed along the street frontage. And here I've shown a slide showing the Edgewater Way frontage, and here's, this is Edgewater Way here, and then this is Mohawk that turns into Edgewater Way. The applicant, in this case, is requesting permission to install a curb and gutter, but would like to pay monies in lieu of the sidewalk construction. The Planning Commission may consider that offer if they determine that the project would still conform to the plans and policies of the cities, of the city. It is staff's opinion that the construction of the sidewalk is necessary for the reconfigured lots to comply with the goals and policies in the city's general plan and local coastal plan. A new sidewalk would be constructed adjacent to the property line, not within the existing paved area on Edgewater Way. Let's see, let me put some slide, here's the project, or a slide showing Edgewater Way facing west. Here's the project site in the left, and here's the paved area as you're facing west on Edgewater. And then here's another slide showing Edgewater Way as you're facing east. Project site is here to the right, and here's the paved area on Edgewater Way. Can't see, sorry. The project was also reviewed for consistency with the local coastal plan, which strives to eliminate and/or reduce hazards created by loading and drainage-related issues with, which contribute to bluff top erosion. The city's environmental analyst, in consultation with a geologist, determined that the top of bluff is in line with the general 124-foot contour line, and that the rate of retreat for the existing or proposed structures would be limited to no more than about one inch per year, or six feet north of the top of bluff. Therefore, the limit of the sea cliff retreat setback is shown on Sheet A02.2 of the project plans, and noted as top of bluff. The project is consistent with the local coastal plan, because it does not affect major public view, any major public views to and from the ocean, and it will not block public access to the beach. So, in conclusion, staff finds that this project is appropriate for the neighborhood and compatible with the goals and policies of the general and, general plan and local coastal plan, with the installation of the required sidewalk curb and gutter. Staff recommends that the PC approve the modifications for the lot, and also the lot line adjustment and the coastal development permit. Make the findings in the staff report subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. We have Steve Foley from Public Works Transportation Planning here to answer further questions about public improvements, and we also have the owner, owners, Mr. and Mrs. Sherat, and the owner's agent, Raymond Appleton, is also here to make a presentation.
Thank you. Will there be an applicant presentation, please? You'd give your name and relationship for the record?
My name is Raymond Appleton, I'm with the Firm of Permit Planners, and I'm representing as agent, Mr. and Mrs. Sherat, and I'm really happy to do so. When I first met them and they were interested in this property, they were very excited about it. They're from Boston. The architectural appearance of these single homes seemed very comfortable to them, and they decided that they would purchase the lot, both lots, with the goal of living in the larger home, and they have one son who is married and has a new child, their first grandchild, their opportunity to occupy the smaller home. I would like to show a couple of things. I do want to point out a couple of the exhibits, though, that she showed. Number 16 and 21, one was an aerial view looking from the property down, and you could see the white roof of a previous residence that was built below and on the bluff. And then from the aerial on Exhibit 21, you could actually see it's still there. Now, when they bought the property, they've started cleaning this property up from the very beginning. It had a lot of problems on it. And one of them was this illegal residence, a one-bedroom home that had been built on the bluff. They got a coastal development permit to remove that, and as part of that coastal development permit, they got an approved Planning Commission landscape plan for both restoration of the bluff and the right-of-way. Everything that, everything in front of the, they have 44 feet of frontage 2215 did at that time, and so they got a permit for the landscaping in the right-of-way and the restoration of the bluff face, which they've done, and which has been signed off and all permitted. And that was a great, the previous owners, for decades, had just let ice plant, as you know the damage that does on steep property, getting all that out of there, getting all the non-native plants all off the bluff face, all along that whole face of the bluff below the homes, and installing drought-tolerant, native bluff-appropriate plannings. So, it just seemed like a win-win to me from the very beginning. The work that they were willing to do and the money they were willing to invest to achieve their goal. This is, this is a good example, right here, of 2305, which I highlighted in some color. In the, you can see where the new garage is going to go, and you can also see that, as is now required, Marburg has these huge trashcans. You can't put them anywhere in the front yard, and you can't put them anywhere in the garage. So, when you're at six-foot setbacks, like, I'm going to say 50 percent of the homes are in this community, they have, legally, they can only put them in their living room and carry them out, or put them in the backyard and carry them up the hill or down the hill. So, but, they, Mr. Sherat, who is an architect in Boston and also licensed here, designed the garages to conform and have a place for, you can see at the back of the garage, three of these large trashcans and recycling bins. Very, you'll see very few applicants taking the time and consideration. He's taken a lot of time to learn, not just what the rules are in this city, but what the people want and what the neighborhood wants. And that was one of the advantages. So, and you can see, out further in the dark blue, the old hedge. Right now, when you go out there, as those photographs show, the old hedge comes way out into the right-of-way, and that's being completely removed and replaced just with a three-foot-six-inch hedge all along the front property line. a 3-foot 6-inch hedge all along the front property line. Instead of 8 feet of hedge sticking out almost 10 feet into the, actually, more than 10 feet into the right-of-way, there'll be just a 3-foot 6-inch at that property. You want to show them the other, the other lot? This is my wife, Dorinda, incidentally, my number-one assistant. This is, this is the other lot. It shows the residence of 2215 Edgewater Way. It shows the new garage. Also, you'll see where it's been designed to have the traction enclosures also. And it shows in darker red where the, or orange, where the old car part was. It used to sit right on the property line, and that's being moved back to get it away from the front also. You can also see here, again, a dark blue where the big hedge comes out, and you've seen it in the photographs too, comes out into the right-of-way. You'll see down here, circled in yellow, hedge and landscaping previously approved by planning commission. Now, I could have taken those bubbles all the way down and covered the entire area of 2215 at that time, but this is the only area that really matters now. And there's a, they approved a 5-foot hedge right there, and they approved a landscape plan in the front. Now, I want to speak just for a minute before I change. The advantages of this that I saw was the city of Santa Barbara does not, no longer allows guesthouses. The rules have been changed. You can't have a guesthouse with a full, it's a one-bedroom house, and it has a full bathroom. All it's missing is a counter with a sink. It cannot have that second sink in there. There have been zoning issues in the past on this property. This conforming, this non-conforming problem will be remedied by this application. The, also, the problem of not, the way the rules are even now is that both homes can be fully occupied year-round, unlike Montecito, where it's 90 days a year. Here, they can be occupied full times a year, full-time, and they can assist in the mortgage and exist with the rent, and so we have, we have basically this situation, only the city's not getting any benefit from it. Also, all the occupants of the two homes have cars, and as you noticed, right in front of the property when you were out there, the street narrows. For some reason, Edgewater Way comes down and then narrows, and so there's no parking in front of the lots. So by creating two garages and with driveways, ways to get all the cars and their visitors off the street, which helps the neighbors to the east and, and the west. So it removes that non-conforming situation. It also establishes, what I, what they've done here also is in recommend, in offering to volunteer to remove all the hedges and everything from the right-of-way, they've offered to plant, and I'm not going to say in lieu of a sidewalk because that, you can't make that decision. You can make a decision that a sidewalk is not appropriate for the property. You can accept and approve a landscape plan, as the previous planning commission did, on the side, on the part that they've already reviewed, where they approved a landscape plan. They did not approve it in lieu of a sidewalk, they just did not require a sidewalk, and they did not, but they did approve a landscape plan. And in that little area, there's a little bubbled area at the very top on the permitted landscape plan. Let's see that, Dorinda. I think we have that permitted landscape plan. You can see at the very top is the right-of-way area, and the darker black part of that area, that's called out as a ground cover that's about an inch thick, about an inch tall. That was heavily discussed, and that was what was approved there. So 1 inch thick, you can walk on it, you can stand on it. It was designed by Carol Gross. I think you're all familiar with her as a landscape architect, after a lot of discussion, not only with the city and its various departments, and the planning commission, and the Design Review Board that approved it, but with all of the neighbors who absolutely are opposed to any more concrete in, on their Edgewater Way, rural neighborhood-looking street. That's the way they like it. They don't want any more concrete facing the street. So this is what was worked out at that time, and was, and the landscape plan was approved, as you see it, with the 5-foot-wide, 1-inch-tall ground cover in the first 5 feet of the property. And that's, and we're proposing to continue that landscaping, as you will see in the next landscaping plan. You want to see that, Dorinda? Here you'll see, in this revised landscape plan, you'll see, after meetings with many of the neighbors, in fact, today I brought in a letter, documents of 34 neighbors, and nearly all of them live on Edgewater Way. Some just up Mohawk, a couple up Palisades, a couple up another street, but nearly all. And that's, that's a lot of, a lot of, a big percentage of the people who live on Edgewater Way have all signed a petition not to have sidewalks installed. They're in support of the project, but they don't want sidewalks. And the ones, and we've gone to their houses, in fact, everybody that has signed either the petition not to have sidewalks or petition directly supporting the project, we have met with them personally and talked to them. Many have asked to see copies of the plans. I've showed them plans, even as late as two nights ago in the rain at their homes. I just got a call two minutes before I walked in the door, I mean, two minutes after arriving here, from Laura Bridley, who you may know as a land planner, saying she's sorry she got to it so late. She just sent an email supporting the project. But she's also, has a letter in there from earlier when she supported the project. Some of the, some of the letters she's support, because it was in sequence or dated earlier, but this is what, this is what we have. Anyway, that ground cover at the very top of where 215 used to be is now continued all the way around and would cover both lots, the frontage of both lots. And again, Mr. and Mrs. Sherat have tried to make peace with not only the city in following the rules, but with their neighborhood and with the neighbors where they live. And they don't want to come in and be the ones that rolled out more concrete on the street front, where it is not appropriate. The rules actually say, if you read every single word of the, the sidewalks are not required. They are recommended where appropriate, where appropriate. In fact, those exact words in quote are in there, where appropriate. Mr. and Mrs. Sherat and all of the signers of the petition do not think that sidewalks are appropriate for this neighborhood, for this street, for this specific location. We have met with those who were concerned about the corner. That's where we came up with the proposal you see before you for the continuation of the ground cover that was previously approved, continuation of that on around the corner. And we hope, in fact, it was on the handout that I gave you in color, also shows where all that is. Now, some of the letters that were signed, they've signed at different times when different issues mattered. Nobody's opposed to the project. They all support the project, but some of their letters are specifying, speaking to specific issues. They wanted to support the Sherats with a 6-foot fence, it'll say, instead of being reduced to 3 1/2. So the, we're, we're very concerned about this, about, and now, I'm, I used to be president of the La Mesa Association, and during that time, we considered many times where the city could spend money and improve sidewalks. And one of our big ones was Cliff Drive. We went, I mean, going on down, not Cliff Drive, I mean, Carrillo, I'm sorry, Carrillo, going on down the hill from, down Megs Road. The city did eventually get around to doing that. One of the other considerations, though, was Mesa Lane. It was all, because Mesa Lane, from the public stairs at Edgewater to Monroe School and all of the connecting streets that all the kids use and families use to get to either the stairway or the school, and mainly the school, it is one entire length of sidewalk, except for two lots. I've been out there, I've taken pictures of families with their children walking down those sidewalks from school and to school. My wife and I have been there together, and where they, they have to step out in the street, walk around cars, and then step back onto the sidewalk because of those two lots. I mean, I, they are, Mr. and Mrs. Sherat are not proposing that the money be spent in that location. What we're, what I'm saying is that my experience in this community for 35 years and, and is that there is better places to spend the money that are more appropriate, that you could find in conformance with the general plan. The, we have a contractor who, in submitting a request for an in-lufy, we had to provide a bid, $8,500, to install this sidewalk. We added 50% of that, made it a $17,000 offer. And that was after talking to the staff, that when you're doing it in-lufy, you should consider, there's variables they might not, they might not expect. So we added, to make it to $17,000 in-lufy, to build two sections of sidewalk someplace else, or put in the needed handicap ramps to complete many of the streets in downtown, where there's thousands of people who have to get, who have one block, it's all done, and then they hit, and then they get in the next, and they can't get back on the street again. There are better places to spend the money.
Can I bring you back to talking about your project, Mr. Appleton?
Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to do that, real quick. But I, this is the most important thing to Mr. and Mrs. Sherat at this time, is keep, is the neighbors are up in arms about this. Now, during our process, about a year and a half ago, we came to the Public Works Department and said the neighbors would like to, what process can they get removed from the infill program? They're number 450. They'd like to be removed. After many, a lot of discussion, we were at first told, in fact, by Mr. Foley, that we were going to only have to put a sidewalk in front of the residence that was becoming a new house. Then we were told that we weren't going to have to put in sidewalks at all. Then we were told, what you see before you now, we're going to have to put in sidewalks. I even have an email from Steve that he knows, which has an apology at the end, saying he's sorry that there's been so much confusion about whether or not sidewalks would or would not be installed. So I just, I just want to finish this up with another, with a little bit of information about this. Well, just an example of how the, where it is appropriate, and which really shows how inappropriate this site is, and how what we're, what we're proposing would be appropriate for the neighborhood. And as many of the neighbors said, it sets an example for what the rest of the neighbors can do in their right-of-way. This is our street. It's hard to see the colors on this. There's one little piece of blue down here in Edgewater Way. That's the, and you saw it when you were out there. 20 years ago, a lot split was done. 20 years ago, a lot split was done off of our lot. This lot right here was split off of this lot. And because it was a lot split 20 years ago, they required a sidewalk to be put right out by the curb. It is as clean as your kitchen floor. Nobody has ever walked on it in 20 years. Here we have Mesa Lane, the most heavily driven, heavily walked street in our entire neighborhood. It is entirely blue with a sidewalk all the way down, except two lots. Our $18,000 could go there. There are other examples, perhaps even better ones, where handicap ramps are needed elsewhere in the community downtown, but this, for our neighborhood, I, as former president of La Mesa Association, I will tell you, we wanted the city to do this 2 and 1/2 decades ago, and they, they don't have the money. I have an email from Sarah Garrett, Sarah Grant at Public Works, that's, when I asked her about the infill program and the funding for it, she said, and she sends in writing to me, "Well, we just don't have any money to do it. We operate on grants, and grants have run out, and we no longer have any money at Public Works to do any sidewalks."
I'm going to ask you to finish up.
Okay. My wife is suggesting I don't need to show you the photographs of the children walking in the street.
I think you're going to, I think you'll be invited back up for plenty of questions.
So in sum, in summing it up, what I would like to say is, I think it's a win-win for the neighborhood to clean up the conforming situations. I think they've already shown their good intent by getting rid of the old illegal residents, by cleaning up the corner all the way around there, and they, they hope that you would, will consider that a sidewalk at this location is not appropriate. You have the right to make that decision, and that the money can be used to satisfy the goals of the general, general plan to improve pedestrian access in the community elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment and then come back for questions. So I have one speaker slipped, and that is Panzi Rankin. I'm just excited to meet somebody named Panzi.
Right.
You can talk as long as you want.
Absolutely, and you'd be surprised at how people misspell that.
So if you'd please introduce yourself and then go right in.
Right. I'm Panzi Rankin, and I live right across the street at 2302 Edgewater Way. We've lived there in continuous residence since 1958. So I've, I've been there over 50, well, I guess I'll give away my age, you can tell, but over 50 years in that residence. So I'm here as a concerned neighbor, beyond all the technicalities and whatever is going on. My concern is retaining the integrity of that particular street. Having been on that corner, I'm right on the other, the opposite corner on Mohawk and Edgewater, so I have seen that whole neighborhood, I've seen Santa Barbara grow over 50-some years. And you're all aware of the neighborhood, what the Mesa is, smaller homes on the, on the whole. And as I'm watching this, I saw on, over 50 years on Edgewater Way, there has been one actual rebuild, a new house built where one sidewalk was put in. And I think it kind of slipped by the neighbors. I think it was put in before the neighbors even realized what was happening, because I know in the 80s, there was a whole neighborhood, street petition about never having sidewalks, concrete sidewalks on Edgewater Way. But, I mean, I think that just took everybody by surprise, and so what you've seen for over 50 years is one sidewalk has appeared on that street. And the reason being, that used to be an empty lot. We've, we've had that empty lot since I was a kid. As a matter of fact, before the steps were built, way before, that was our way down to the beach. We went, we clambered down the cliff together. My point is, that particular street is a very unique street, I think, on the Mesa. From Oliver Road all the way along Edgewater Way, which is part of the scenic, scenic markings in Santa Barbara, all the way over to the Mesa Lane, which are where the steps are, that's a particularly unique walk for not only the neighbors, but for tourists. I've been working out in my front yard for many years, and what has happened over the 50 years is lush vegetation, trees, beautiful hedges and other things that have grown along there. And I've had people actually stop as I'm working out in the yard and comment on the beauty of that street, that, you know, this is really a gorgeous street. People, as a matter of fact, I've had several times, people compare it to, this feels like Hawaii, I feel like I'm on Kauai or something. We do have sidewalks along that street. The thing is, they are the natural dirt and grass or whatever. So in terms of a safety factor, there are sidewalks. I think our objection is having concrete put in along that street, because I can tell you, every neighbor comes out, and every time they look at that one concrete sidewalk that sits, sticks out like a sore thumb along the neighborhood, we just shake our heads. But as I said, that slipped past us because that concrete driveway appeared before anybody really knew what was happening. But since then, what I think, it's not only the neighborhood, I really think that we will take something away from that natural area along Santa Barbara that's very unique. Because what sidewalks all along that street, because they're, they're fairly modest homes along there. Actually, one of the nicer, bigger homes is the one, you know, across the street, and then the new one that they built in the, the lot next to it. But the rest of the homes, including ours, is a little Mesa home, little 2-, 3-bedroom homes that are, as I said, we all know what they look like, in beautiful setting, and concrete sidewalks along there. We end up with just another... We end up with just another subdivision that could be in any other neighborhood in L.A., except, of course, we're by the beach. But, so I'm doing this just from a Santa Barbaraan and a neighborhood point of view, is that it just is not the place for sidewalks. There are, as I'm out in the front yard or looking out the window, that's where the marath, you know, the semi, the half-marathons, or whatever, the joggers, cyclists, and a lot of walkers, and dogs. You know the Mesa is dog heaven. So there are a lot of dog walkers, et cetera. That's just a natural, walking, beautiful neighborhood. In a matter of safety, I know what, this is what the sidewalks are a consideration. My mom was in a walker, she died at ninety-three.
Ms. Rankin, if I could ask you to finish up.
Yes, yes. And down the road, another lady who was in her nineties. They walked along there in walkers, towards Mesa, you know, the Mesa Steps. And I just think our concern is replacing kind of a natural beauty with concrete. And that's our concern, is we just don't want concrete along there. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close that portion. And it's back to the commission for questions to staff or the applicant. Ms. Pujol.
I have two questions, and actually, I think they could be answered by either the applicant or the staff, I suppose. The first one has to do with the applicant's proposal not to install the standard concrete sidewalk. But I do believe you still intend to direct drainage away from the site and towards the outlet at the bottom of Mohawk, I believe. So I'd like a little more information on, without the actual standardized sidewalk, how would that plan to occur? And then my second question, just you have both, is you also mentioned some restoration work was done on the bluff top some time ago, taking out some more water-intensive plantings and added in some more drought-tolerant. If you could just, I wasn't here at that time, but if, I would like to know when that occurred. And I believe you said that that got some city review at the time, I'm not sure. So if you could just maybe summarize that for my benefit, at least, that would be great.
Ms. Appleton.
Answer your second question first. The landscape plan of the approved, plan where we showed you at the top, what was approved in the right-of-way with the one-inch for the five-feet width, that was an, that's the approved landscape plan for the entire bluff, about fifty feet wide, coming all the way across that whole bluff. That was all done by Carol Gross. And it was installed in, and that was done in, and that, at the time, right after the house, that illegal house was removed by the Sherrets, they did that. And that was done about three years ago?
Two thousand nine.
Yeah, two thousand nine. And you saw when you were out there, there's some flagstone steps. That was all part of the plan. Everything at grade was allowed, and there's some flagstone steps down to it for maintenance, and some railroad ties, steps from in twenty-three-oh-five. That was all part of the plan and all approved. As far as drainage, they are, they are supporting a concrete curb. That, the house next to us has a concrete curb, and the houses across the street, to the east on the other side, have concrete curb running down to get, to get water to that grate at the end. So we're, we're not opposed to, and they're offering to pay for a concrete curb and a gutter to come all the way around and go down. What they don't want is concrete, a concrete sidewalk. Now, we have proposed to staff during discussions, another path. And I think maybe you're kind of headed in that way. In Montecito, as you know, for eight years, they battled on what to do with San Lucero Road to the school, Montecito Union School. And they finally came up with a crushed granite material that met ADA standards, and it winds its way along San Lucero Road from the freeway all the way up to the Montecito Union School. And that was, that went through a lot of, not only local, but state review too, for conformance. We, they haven't been opposed to that. It's making, this neighborhood just doesn't need any more concrete. If there's, if you denied the sidewalk, we would be happy to work with the city to come up with a passable path of travel that conformed with landscaping somehow. Either a decomposed granite path that met the regulations, or some other way. But at this point, if you just denied the sidewalk, we would propose that you approve our landscape plan. So that's, that's where we are. But we're not opposed to working, working with Public Works staff for this particular neighborhood street, to put in something more appropriate, that is appropriate.
Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was curious if Mr. Foley has a diagram of what would be proposed for the sidewalk? Because when I read the conditions of approval, page five of the conditions, it's D-one, E-one. They're calling for a five-foot-wide sidewalk, a hundred-and-eighty-feet-long, with a four-foot parkway, which seems to fly in the face of the other sidewalk that we just saw in the photos, that directly abuts it, that's at the curb. So how do those come together? Why are we having a different standard? And then what happens at the terminus, where we turn from Mohawk back onto Edgewater, near that big storm drain inlet? Is it just a sidewalk that ends in the midst of landscaping?
Welcome, Mr. Foley. Welcome back.
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Bartlett. Depending on how this commission decides to go with this project, we weren't, didn't have the, because there's not a design that was presented as part of this project, we were trying to craft the best way. So the condition that's in there probably really needs to be worked on. The five-foot sidewalk is what we consider as the minimum sidewalk width. Where that sidewalk is located in that right-of-way will determine the rest of the design. If the sidewalk were to be placed at the property line, there would need to be a, at the, adjacent to the neighbor. Yeah, we got the pointer. Excuse me here. If at this location, next to the neighbor, there would need to be a connection from the sidewalk up to that point. If the sidewalk were to go along the curb and gutter, then obviously, we wouldn't have a parkway. The design guidelines, what you would normally see in the design of a project such as this, is you would have, at the property line, your sidewalk, then you would have a parkway, then you would have your roadway. Currently, the entire right-of-way width is fifty feet. We have twenty-two, approximately twenty-two feet of roadway. So there's a lot of right-of-way to work with in this design here. There's about fourteen or fifteen feet.
And a concrete sidewalk where it crosses the two driveways, one on each lot? That would need to be concrete instead of the permeable paving that the applicant is showing?
As far as...
The ADA access across the driveway?
The ADA access in the back of the driveway? Yeah, that would be concrete. Yeah. The city engineer is not going to sign off on something that's not easily maintainable. They're gonna be looking for the standard materials that you're gonna be seeing, such as concrete. That is in their standard materials, so that they're gonna be looking at. So as the years go by, they can maintain that. And any liability issues, they are accepting those.
And then the dead-end terminus of the sidewalk near the storm drain inlet?
That would just terminate. Terminate at the, at end of the property.
Okay. And then I have another question. On page six of the conditions, it's D-one, E-seven, requiring a new Cobra head streetlight. I thought we had a new standard street light, the domus, or whatever they call that style. I was surprised to see a Cobra head listed as being the new streetlight.
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Bartlett, I noticed that too, but there are still streets where they're installing Cobra heads. And I spoke to the engineering department this morning, and they confirmed that it would be a Cobra head arm. And it would still be the same existing utility pole, but it would be a Cobra head arm that would be installed by the applicant.
Okay, it just seems opposite of the standards, as we've learned it. Okay. All right, that's it for my questions right now.
Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My questions for staff at this point. Ms. Broaddus, and could you put up the slide again that showed the hedge, hedge modification? Hedge height modification. Unless I'm not seeing this clearly, and from our site visit on Tuesday, isn't there a fence now that, that, the adjacent neighbor to the east on Edgewater has erected that? Is it five, five feet? Is that? And I think that was pointed out to us at our site visit. And there was discussion of the hedge, of the Sherretts' hedge meeting, meeting the five-foot height of the fence that I don't see in this picture. I don't know if this is an old, older photo than when the site, than when the fence was erected? Okay, so, so in correcting what we should be seeing, right? There should be a five-foot fence in this photo that we're then considering being lined up with the hedge height of the Sherretts' property. Is that right?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz, that is correct. There, this photo was taken from when this project was last seen at Planning Commission in two thousand nine. And since then, this hedge has been reduced to match the height of an adjacent fence on an adjacent property.
Okay. And please just confirm for me, then, staff has no issue with the hedge height, or the proposed hedge height, aligning with the neighbor's fence height?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Schwartz, that was discussed in detail at the last hearing, obviously, before you were on the commission.
Yes.
And a lot of the neighbors were very concerned about the loss of their public views. And as I said, it was discussed in detail. And it was agreed by the Planning Commission that as long as that hedge didn't exceed that height of that adjacent fence, that it wouldn't inhibit neighboring, the public views.
Which is five feet, just so we're kind of all thinking along the same. Okay, very good. Like to go back to what seems to be a thematic discussion today on the project, and that is our circulation element, pedestrian master plan, and topic of concrete cement sidewalks here, concrete sidewalks, I guess. When, like to take us back to when the neighbors, what is that address? Twenty-three-oh, here we go. Twenty-three-oh-seven Edgewater, where it sort of visually stands out that there's this little piece of sidewalk, and it's the only piece, isn't it, along Edgewater? And so I'm just trying to put this decision in context for my own understanding as to why that would have been required when that would be the only portion of sidewalk. I mean, it's sort of, to me, is counter to what we've been attempting to do, which is where there are gaps in sidewalks in neighborhoods, where it makes sense, fill in the gaps. But this is sort of the reverse. Putting in a piece of sidewalk where there aren't sidewalks, and there was no larger planning effort for the city to financially invest in and build sidewalks in this part of the Mesa. So I'm, maybe you could help me understand how this came to be, because it seems to be sort of a fly in the ointment in what we're considering today.
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Schwartz. When, you have two ways of developing the right-of-way. One is through the development of a property, and the other one is through the funds of the city. When a discretionary project, such as a lot split, or in this case, a lot line adjustment, is coming forward, the city's looking to the policies that are in place, and where there is, appears to be directions, such as the pedestrian master plan, to put those in. And as part of the review of the land development process, the city looks to the developer to be providing those types of, those types of improvements. So, actually, it was two thousand and five when that sidewalk went in on the twenty-three-oh-seven. As part of the development and the lot split of that project, that was a condition of approval placed by this body, this commission, to put in that, that portion of the sidewalk. Obviously, you're going to have, when there's other opportunities, such as this one, to make connections and to increase that, that pedestrian accessway. This is that opportunity. And then, as was stated before, you then have the infill program that goes through the city over the years, and will, over a long period of time, eventually, hopefully, fill in all those gaps.
Now, the in-luf fee, my next question is about in-luf fee. For applicants that pay an in-luf fee, let's say, should that be the arrangement? In this case, or any other? Is it the city's discretion as to how the fee is applied, sort of in the spirit of the policy in which it's being applied? If not, if not in that location? So in this case, if an in-luf fee is paid in lieu of constructing a sidewalk in front of these two, these addresses, is it then up to the city decide where and how to spend the, what is it, is it one and a half mil, what's the figure we're looking at today? Is it? Yeah, seventeen, I think Mr. Appleton mentioned it's around seventeen thousand. So would that, would that be at the, kind of the direction of staff to propose how that gets applied in the spirit of the policy? You know, the pedestrian master plan, goals, kind of an objective?
Yes, Commissioner Jordan, or Chair Jordan, Commissioner Schwartz. The engineering division, the streets design division, maintains a list and continually updates that list of priority sections of the city. I would imagine what they would do is look at those top projects that are in there. First of all, I would imagine they say, is there a project that is near the top that the funds could directly go to and finish a project? The other thing might be, and it would help in grants, if there was part of the fund for the infill sidewalk program, that we could say, we have a fifty-thousand-dollar project, we're applying for a grant, and we have seventeen thousand dollars that we're, that we can match to that project. That could help in the, attaining the grant process. So I couldn't say specifically what the project is, or what number it is, but they would start from the top and look for the, you know, the most appropriate use of those funds.
Okay. Still on the same general topic. So a surface, perhaps, other than concrete? If we were to look at that. Now, my experience with ADA requirements, and I dealt with this on the Santa Barbara Botanical Garden surfacing when I was on the county H.L.A.C. some years back, there are different, there are different perspectives as to what's ADA-compatible, in terms of a surface being accessible and safe, to make it ADA-compatible. Different experts have different viewpoints on this. And I'm wondering if the city has vetted this in such a way that we have a list of what we officially consider ADA-acceptable non-cement or non-concrete surfaces? Because this, this topic is coming up. Now, we're wanting to be not only compliant, but sensitive to making our roadways, pathways, accessible to all in our community. So I think we're gonna, if we haven't already, we're gonna have to wrestle this to the, to the ground, so to speak.
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Schwartz. The, kind of, couple things going on here. One is the ADA requirements, federal requirements. And there are materials, and there are other types of concrete, such as permeable concrete, that might be usable. The city's going to be looking for, so you have the ADA requirement as far as what's the best material to be used. But then you have the maintenance. Your commission could come in and say, well, a brick sidewalk would be great. And your city engineer is gonna say, I'm not going to sign off on a plan to main- your city engineer is going to say, I'm not going to sign off on a plan to maintain a brick sidewalk. He's going to basically be saying, what I'm going to look for from the Planning Commission is either this is a concrete sidewalk or look for the Planning Commission not to be providing a sidewalk. So it's kind of, let's meet the standard or let's not be proposing something that we will have a very difficult time and setting a precedent for this happening in other areas of the city.
And then in final, I want to talk about the landscaping plan. It's sort of, you know, tangentially related to this. So the Carol Gross-designed landscaping plan that was approved, what, what is our discretionary parameters today? What are our parameters today as to whether or not we can revisit any of those landscaping plans, both, I would say, behind the residential structures at the bluff top as well as in this rounded section of the corner, you know, this east where Mohawk and Edgewater come together where it's a rounded corner?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Schwartz, the landscape plan that was approved in 2009 was for the replanting of the bluff where the structures were removed. And for the, this area here, right where Mohawk and Edgewater kind of a butt. I think Mr. Appleton is talking about installing landscaping here up in the front in lieu of a sidewalk. And that, that is up to, up for discussion today, although I think what Mr. Foley just said is that landscaping wouldn't be approved by the engineering department, so, as a sidewalk material.
Yes.
Another thing that I, I feel like I should have mentioned during my site visit, I mean, during my PowerPoint presentation, is that this, the slide, for anyone who's looking at it, is, is a little deceiving because the paved area here is not as wide as it should or could be. The actual property line is not here where the existing curb is. The actual property line is about 15 feet further back over here. So any, any sidewalk, if that's what decide, was decided today, would not be put in this area and it wouldn't match this sidewalk here. It would be much further back and actually in, basically widening the existing paving in that area. So I felt like I should have clarified that. When I'm looking at these slides, it is a little deceiving.
So if we were to, and then I'll conclude by just asking, if we were to recommend or direct or approve a certain type of landscaping in the, in the front and that wraps around onto Mohawk, would that be a separate, that be a supplement to the landscaping plan that was approved in '09? Or how would we handle that in terms of perhaps, you know, deliberation and emotion today if, if we were to go in that direction?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Schwartz, that would be part of today's approval.
So that'd be a, a new condition and not an augmentation of the previous landscaping plan or something, just to understand our protocol?
It would be incorporated into the plans and then when it returned to Single Family Design Board, it would be included on the final approval.
Okay, okay.
I would like to add something that Steve forgot to add.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Appleton.
Most important and part of the answer to the first question you asked, how did it come about that the lot next door had, had a sidewalk? The only way it was done is because that piece of land used to be part of our piece of land and it was a lot split. I have researched as a land use planner for other people, there, there is no other piece of lot that was that, that is that big, big enough that have three, could have three lot frontages. There is no other lot from Mesa Lane to Oliver that can be subdivided or that could go through a lot line adjustment and not reduce the lots, because they're all narrow lots, not reduce one narrower than would be allowed for the required street frontage. There will never be another sidewalk on Edgewater Way that will meet the current only requirements. The only ways that we're even here is because it says lot splits or, or lot line adjustments. That's when they can recommend a sidewalk. Other, you can build an entire new home as we, on Edgewater Way. No sidewalk would be required, could be required, only if it's a lot split or lot line adjustment and there will be no further lot splits or lot line adjustments on Edgewater Way. And I've gone through the whole map, I've looked at everything very carefully, the street frontages, the different lots I have. It's not possible. And so you're, what, the bad decision they made to put in that little piece of sidewalk when that lot split was done off of our lot, that bad decision should not be exacerbated and inappropriate decision when the law itself says where appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Appleton. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. Just picking up on that point with staff, if I can, if a sidewalk were to go in, and I'm using the term were, the corner of Edgewater and Mohawk, would that require a handicap ramp as part of city requirements?
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Campanella, yes, there would be a ramp that would be required at the corner.
Okay. So whether it were a alternate material for a sidewalk, if we're considered a sidewalk, decomposed granite, you'd still have to go back to concrete when you hit the corner? Is that correct? Perhaps?
It would be whatever is approvable from an ADA standpoint. So I don't know that that has to be concrete from a material of the, that's approvable by the city engineer, yes, it would have to be concrete.
Depending on the grade, I would guess that would go there. So I'm just questioning, you know, whether something would really be in place or out of place because there's actually nowhere for the handicap person to roll off to, I guess. We're not on a four-corner section, it's mid-block and if you put it in and you're required a ramp, that's one other thing that would be considered relative to if it's appropriate or not, which, and I'm, I'm using the word appropriate, assuming that that's what the regulations are and that's, leaves us with that discretion to determine whether something's appropriate or not in this specific location.
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Campanella, as far as using a particular word or a one policy, I think you need to take the whole pedestrian master plan, local coastal plan, circulation element into, into account. So if you feel that is the direction that it needs, it's your discretion to determine that, that that's appropriate or not.
Okay. So there are complic, there are other things to consider once you go to some type of surface that can be used as a sidewalk. I wanted to bring that up. There's other issues involved as well, especially, you know, when we, when we look at appropriate, it's safety, you know, as well. I think that's one thing I'd want to consider if it was an unsafe situation without it, but cosmetically it looked good, that might be one decision on our part. If by putting something in, it created an unsafe or a deceptive situation, let's say, we'd want to be concerned about that too, because by requiring, maybe we, maybe coming up with an unintended consequence that's not really good for public safety. So that's, that's what we want to consider. The, the second comment, my only other comment is on the hedge. In the report, there are reasons for leaving it at a five-foot hedge, but as far as it's not going to cut off views, the applicant made, I believe it was the applicant made a comment that it's the second front yard and I don't know if there is substantiation, you know, in our rules that if the second, you get a little more leeway in that. I see Mr. Cato shaking his head, so I guess that's, that's substantiated. My only concern, I don't, I'm uncomfortable with a reason, there's probably good reasons for the five feet, but I'm inferring one of the reasons that are put in is because of the fence and hedge that currently exist on a neighboring property. And, you know, I'm looking at that as an observation, but not as a reason, because that fence can go down, it can fall over, the hedges can get cut. So if this is just an observation, I'm fine, but I don't think particularly that, in my own mind, that that should be a reason for allowing something that connects to it to be the same height.
Commissioner Campanella, so, for corner lots, it's pretty recent, the last four or five years, we have, the, the staff hearing officer, the Planning Commission has pretty routinely approved modifications for overheight fences or hedges on the quote, secondary front yard, right? The one, I mean, and that, which one that is is subject to discussion, but usually it's the one that where you're, you don't want people looking into your backyard all the time. So it's been pretty routine to allow a, a five or six-foot high fence right on the property line if it's your secondary front yard. And that's the situation here. As you're driving west on, on, or if you're walking west on Edgewater, you hit Mohawk, you're looking right into their backyard. And so the justification isn't because there's a, there's a fence over on the neighboring property that you want to match. The justification is that we want to provide some privacy to your backyard. It's not, it's not obscuring the view of, and it's, of the, of the ocean. So it seems like a win-win for everybody.
Right. So I, I guess, I, I appreciate your comments and I was just wondering if maybe, you know, on, I don't know if it's in the findings for the modification, but, you know, if it's inferred that one of the reasons we're doing it, I'm just raising it for my fellow commissioners, if one of the reasons is because it matches, I don't want confusion, that's one of the reasons that we, we approve this modification. I think it's an observation, but since it's in the same list of why it's okay or why it's recommended for approval, it may lead to some confusion that that's one of the reasons that we approve the mod, which might set some precedent.
Commissioner Campanella, I just quickly read over the findings for the overheight hedge and it doesn't mention that. It only mentions, it says, as discussed in section 5A of the staff report, the property frontage acts as a secondary private yard for the existing structure and the increased hedge height will aid in screening the windows from oncoming traffic, providing privacy for the yard area and will allow the owner to secure the bluff top from trespassers without obstructing public views. So there's no mention at all of connecting to the fence next door in the findings.
Okay, I stand corrected because I was looking at the findings on page nine of the staff report where it mentions that. That would be on the first paragraph on page nine?
Oh, I see, yeah. I mean, that's, yes, that is an observation.
I'm fine. If that's going to be eliminated in the findings itself, then I'm okay. Okay. Sorry about the confusion. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Madam Mayor.
I had that operation last week.
Madam Mayor. I think we're still in questions and I have a question for Mr. Vincent. Would you talk about this concept of an in-lufy and the nexus that that might have between this project and anywhere it might be used? I think we're getting into an area where this isn't even a viable option unless there is a nexus.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would characterize the, the proposed in-lufy as a proposal from the applicant attempting to support and, and create the project or create an element of the project that meets the circulation element standards. Your, your required findings for approving the lot line adjustment is that there's consistency with the general plan. That's, that's what triggered the adjacent sidewalk was a prior planning commission find, in order to find consistency with the circulation element, they saw a sidewalk as being that, that was the way that that consistency was found. I don't know, I don't recall, you know, whether the applicant in that particular case was offering an in-lufy or was simply willing to put in the sidewalk, that, you know, I don't remember the, the circumstances of that particular application. What the, the way I would see the, the applicant's proposal in this case for an in-lufy is they're trying to meet a standard that says, you know, our, our circulation element policy goal, number five, 5.1 concerning walking reads as follows, "The city shall create an integrated pedestrian system within and between city neighborhoods, schools, recreation areas, commercial areas, and places of interest." One way we could do that is from, is by having these infill sidewalks in, in locations. And as the applicant pointed out in their presentation, there are two, two segments along Mesa Lane that are missing. Well, one way to look at this application is that there's a large part of Edgeway that's missing its sidewalk and this would be the start or the second piece of filling that sidewalk in. The, the in-lufy that they are proposing were essentially a, a contribution to the sidewalk infill program. That's the way I would look at it. I would suggest that our condition be that we accept their offer, if they, if you choose to do that, that the city accept that offer of, of a dedication of a dollar amount that would be placed or utilized within the priorities of the, the city's existing sidewalk infill program. And, and the idea would be that it's meeting, it's contributing to that integrated sidewalk system. Yes, it's contributing at another location, but it is contributing to that as opposed to doing nothing. I mean.
Kind of like a transfer of development rights?
It's, the, the, I mean, compared to, compared to approving the project with no in-lufy, I find that more consistent with the general plan than, you know, approving the project without one and, and without a sidewalk. In other words, if, if there isn't going to be a sidewalk here, I would find it much more consistent with the general plan that they make that contribution to the infill program than not, if that helps.
Another question for Mr. Foley, perhaps a little tongue-in-cheek. You mentioned one of the ways to achieve the sidewalks is to fill in gaps around the city and so I would assume that you looked at Edge, Edgewater Way when the sidewalk went in in 2007 as having a 100% gap? Because the neighborhood had no sidewalks and, oh, I guess we look at.
Commissioner Thompson, that was actually a little before my time, but however, I think it would just be recognized as, yes, that you had a very large gap. We had a similar situation on, on MedCliff where you had 300 feet of no sidewalk that was approved last year. So lots of times you have that ability where it's the first piece and depending on the project, you will have projects that might be a subdivision and there is no sidewalks. You are putting those in, they're not necessarily a gap. This is a little different in that it is an established neighborhood, but along those lines, yes, it's, you have a very large gap on Edgewater in that existing condition.
Okay. One follow-up on Commissioner Campanella's question regarding if we did have a sidewalk and it having to have an ADA-compatible terminus, I, looking at the site out there, it looks like the terminus would have a bit of a problem with the city storm drain grate. So I just point that out as not a question, but an observation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd actually like to also just point one thing out. Mr. Cato pointed it out to me correctly and I just wanted to emphasize from the city's engineer's position, I mean, if you are looking at directing pedestrian traffic through a pathway, that needs to be a sidewalk. So really, I could either be a city standard sidewalk or if you can make the findings, then no sidewalk at all.
Are you raising your hand, Kelly? Okay.
Chair Jordan and Commissioners, I also wanted to mention that during the hearing, at the beginning of the hearing, Mr. Appleton did hand me a list of, I think it was about 34 letters from various people in the neighborhood supporting the request to not provide sidewalk. I did receive also a letter during the hearing from Laura Bridley, who resides at 118 Mohawk Road, who is in support of the completion of the sidewalk along Edgewater and Mohawk Road. So I received that during the hearing.
That's not quite accurate.
Thank you. No, that's okay. That's, she's just making a staff report, so.
If there's a sidewalk and she wants it done before.
You've had your opportunity.
Not in favor of the sidewalk.
So, Ms. Broaddus, could you tell me on the mod for the hedge, was consideration given there to have a fence with a mod rather than a hedge? Or is it just a hedge because there was a hedge there before in the same area?
Chair Jordan, the applicant just requested a hedge. He didn't ask for a fence.
So a dynamic, growing, living thing rather than a static mod, right? Okay. Mr. Foley, welcome to our day. You and I had a chance to chat a couple times over the last couple of days, so I'm sure you're ready for these. So you've mentioned, and I, I was out there last night measuring pavement, so your 22 feet is right on, spot on in front of the property right there. And I know there's a ton of space and you're, I think I heard the word 15 feet to the property line from the right-hand side by the property there, right? right? And so if a sidewalk and curb, or just a curb, was proposed, but moved into that right-of-way, jogged over toward the property, an amount of space, 5, 10 feet, whatever it is, who would then pay for the road improvements?
Mr. Chair, I'll...
Okay.
The design of the right-of-way is part of being consistent with the circulation element. To have a design that doesn't meet the city's standards, in other words, you have a road that doesn't end at a curb, a road that, you know, that has a gap in between the road and the curb, I don't see that meeting the city's standards. And so if you were to change the right-of-way in this, along these frontages, I would say that you change it to meet city standards. You don't change it to create a non-standard condition.
You've confused me. I'm saying we widen.
The applicant, the city, the applicant, if you condition the project, changing the location of the curb, if that moves the curb back, and there's a gap between the roadway and the curb, that's a non-standard condition. That would create a dirt path in between. It would undermine the curb. That's not how we design roads in the city.
So who placed the curb where it is now?
The applicants proposing the changes is part of this project. If your conditions, say, put a curb in a particular location, then that improvement needs to be designed and built in a city-standard fashion for a right-of-way.
So you would say then that the...
The applicant would be doing the project.
Okay. So you would say then that the proposed curb location on the applicant's plans do not violate a city standard for a roadway width?
The applicant is just proposing to put the curb where it is today.
There is no curb today.
As I understand, there's a curb.
There's absolutely no curb today.
An asphalt curb.
Just trust me.
An asphalt curb. So what?
Mr. Chair, there is an asphalt curb for a portion at the corner. There definitely is not.
Thank you.
A curb. But so, this would be, as the condition is written now, if the existing concrete curb were to be extended, it would be an extension of the curb at 2307, and that concrete curb would continue and wrap around the corner. So that is one potentiality of a design.
So the curb on the applicant's plans match the extension of the curb there being extended along the dirt abutting the asphalt that's in place?
Mr. Chair, as it's currently designed, yes. It would be the extension of the concrete curb that exists at 2307, and it would just be a complete extension of that down easterly on Edgewater.
It's hard to see on that, but I'll tell you that the power pole on the ground right now is 24 inches from the edge of asphalt. But on the site plan I'm looking at, on the applicant's plans, I would have a hard time saying that the power pole is 24 inches from the edge of pavement. So either the curb has moved in to the street, or the power pole's been moved, one or the other. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, I know, is, as I'll tell you later, I know exactly what the street widths are in that whole area. And this is by far the smallest street width in that whole area. You cannot park two cars and drive another car through there at times. And so I would, Mr. Vincent, I would question that the allowance of a curb as being proposed doesn't meet a city standard. But I'm also being told that I can't manipulate that, because what I'm proposing wouldn't meet a city standard.
Can I speak to the drawing?
No. Mr. Chair, I'm not telling you what your proposal is, because I don't know what the proposal is. My point, the point of my comment, is whatever the planning commission proposes would be a condition of the project. You asked the question, who would pay for the asphalt?
Right.
That would be part of the project, and this is the applicant's project. They could choose to accept that condition, or they could choose not to accept that condition and appeal the action to the city council.
Okay.
But it's, these would be conditions of the project. So that, speaking to that question of who would pay for the asphalt.
Okay.
But the other point that I had is that alterations to the right-of-way are alterations to the city's right-of-way. The city has standard specifications for how you build within the city right-of-way. And so if you're going to build a curb and gutter within the city right-of-way, it has a certain way that it meets a roadway. And that's all I was trying to speak to on that point. I don't know where you're going here, but the bottom line is, it's the applicant's project, and the manner in which the commission approves the project would become conditions of that project. And my recommendation regarding alterations of design would be to keep in mind that the designs need to meet city specifications within the right-of-way.
Okay. Then, Mr. Foley, what are the sidewalk width choices? I mean, all of them, or is there just one? Does it have to be a five-foot sidewalk?
Mr. Chair, as far as the minimum, would be five feet. If you wanted more, you could have more. There are choices, yes. I mean, there are recommendations that are placed in the pedestrian master plan. So...
If you wander up to the adjacent property, that's a five-foot sidewalk?
I believe it is.
Okay. And then, the trigger for a sidewalk in any one of these neighborhoods is a project just like this, right? I've heard two different statements, but this is the way that the city facilitates projects like this.
Mr. Chair, the, when, the findings that are required to approve a subdivision or a lot line adjustment both require a finding of consistency with the general plan. Circulation element is one of those, is one element of the general plan. And so that's where you find the city conditioning projects on having these kinds of elements, because that's the way that the commission can come to make the finding of consistency with the general plan. As Mr. Appleton mentioned, yes, you could do a remodel, and the design review approvals necessary for that remodel, or even the coastal development permit required for that remodel, do not require that finding of consistency with the general plan. And so you don't have that nexus between the action and that condition. Here we have a lot line adjustment. You have, are required to find consistency with the general plan in order to approve it. One way to find that consistency is through the requirement of placing a sidewalk there.
Okay. It's a long yes answer, I think. And then, I'll just, I think you'll just want to answer this question too, Mr. Vincent. If, in consideration of sidewalk, no sidewalk, where a curb would be, if we wanted to talk about establishing no parking zones on one side of the street along the property, would that be appropriate in this venue, or not?
The, I assume, the purpose of the no parking zones would be to ensure proper passage?
You bet. If part of the consideration I'm making in consideration of pedestrian master plan and the general plan is that pedestrians have access along that road, and it happens to be by far the narrowest road in the entire neighborhood at that pinch point, and I was able to take a car off the road at that point to ensure that pedestrians would have more space to walk, is that a topic that I can talk about here, or do I just get back in hot water again?
No, Mr. Chair, what I would recommend that, rather than making that decision here, I would recommend that the planning commission condition, if this was a requirement of the approval, that it would include a condition that that issue be sent to the city's transportation engineer for consideration of the roadway width and the appropriateness of a red curb or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can maybe speak to that a little bit.
Okay.
Because I did have a conversation with the transportation engineer as far as that we did have a very small street, and he deflected that question and said that would be more a question to the fire department. So, then taking it to the fire department, and they recognize that it is also a street that is difficult if there was, be filled up. It's to the point right now where, obviously, they haven't come to the point where they see that fire access cannot be maintained. If it was parked such, and it could be parked such, that there was traffic, or cars going through, or, I say, parked there, it would make it difficult for fire access. In speaking with the fire department, what they'd like to see, if possible, be widening of that road. But they said if this commission does not go that direction, they would continue to monitor the situation, and if necessary, no parking zone be set up.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Appleton, I feel it'd just be fair to let you come up and respond to anything that's been said.
I really don't want to see this commission, historically, make a bad situation worse. I want them to make an appropriate decision about an appropriate improvement on the property. A sidewalk would not be appropriate. I think you, the city attorney has told you that it is possible to make a nexus to accept the in-luffy, providing that it did go towards the pedestrian master plan in some way. I think that's the way that this commission should go. I think it's logical. I think it's historical. When we, 30 years from now, 40 years from now, and there's still no more sidewalks, because there's been no more subdivisions or lot line adjustments on that street, and you've still got this concrete that all of the neighbors have opposed, I think that that's, I think that would be a mistake when you're trying to build a reputation in this community of conformity with neighborhoods. And that's a real goal in this community, of conforming to neighborhood goals and neighborhood designs and neighborhood lifestyles. When you look at architecture, style, planning, and this is a perfect example. And I'm just hoping that you find within you the votes, the motion and the votes to make that nexus, to accept in-luffy, and spend that, the city does not have any money to build any sidewalks and make any improvements, and to take that money and use it where it can be better used on 450 projects above us on the priority list, for the safety of the people who live in those areas.
Thank you.
Oh, I did check. There's never been a known record, a record anywhere of any automobile accident or pedestrian hit on Edgewater Way. And I specifically was asking about the intersection. They couldn't even find one on Edgewater Way.
Thank you. Staff, have any final comments?
Yeah.
Figured?
Okay, so it seems like there's several choices, right? The choice that, the recommendation that we've given to the planning commission is, we think the sidewalk is important here. And so that's one choice, you know. Does the planning commission agree with us, or does the planning commission think that the in-luffy for the sidewalk would be equally appropriate in this situation? That's one choice to be made. Another choice that we haven't talked about too much, but it was just brought up by Commissioner Jordan, and we've talked about it a little bit, is the width of this particular narrow roadway, 22 feet wide. There's about 15 feet of right-of-way that could be, that could be used to widen that road, right? And let's say we put in a five-foot sidewalk and a three-foot, a three-foot parkway, that still leaves about seven feet or so, six, six and a half feet, maybe, to widen the road. And I think from, what I'm going to say is, from a staff perspective, we would, we would recommend that the road be widened, because...
If, just, before you go down that track any farther, if you look at the site plan, doesn't the power pole get in the way?
Well, I mean, to the greatest extent possible, then.
Yeah, okay.
Because I don't think that we would...
Sorry to disturb you, but I hear some little lines, too, and I keep running into the power pole.
Right.
So...
So I'm not sure that we would say that they would need to move the power pole, but at least move to widen the sidewalk to the great extent possible. And I think we would ask for a slight change of the condition of approval about the improvements to, whatever happens with the sidewalk, right? Because this is sort of independent from the sidewalk. But whatever happens to allow some flexibility to get the curb and to widen the road to the greatest extent possible. So those are two issues. Sidewalk, yes. In-luffy, yes. That's one issue. Another is, where should, where should the edge of the curb be? And so we recommend sidewalk, and we recommend widening the street.
Back to the commission for discussion. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of our discussion's been about sidewalks, but we have several other items here that don't seem to be controversial. The lot line adjustment, I think, is a win-win for the city and the applicant. Certainly takes what is an unusable lot and turns it into a usable lot, which is good for the city housing stock, and it's certainly good for the applicant. So that doesn't seem to me to have generated any controversy. The two modifications for the small corners of the garage to fit into the setback certainly can be found supportable, because there's no other way to put a garage there, and the garage certainly is needed. So I would hope we can figure some way to maybe separate the sidewalk issue and see where we want to go with the sidewalk, and not have to encumber the basic lot line adjustment and modifications with the sidewalk issue. I would propose, from my perspective, I don't think we need to put a sidewalk in there. I think that the in-luffy is probably an appropriate way to proceed. One of the things we're supposed to look at is neighborhood compatibility. And if we have a neighborhood that has no sidewalks and doesn't want sidewalks, then if we put sidewalks in there, it's not neighborhood compatible. We ought to be looking at more than just simply the building. There's a whole lot that goes into a property, including landscaping and, like here, hedges, walls, and sidewalks, any of the hardscape. So neighborhood compatibility, I think, encompasses the sidewalk. And we have a neighborhood that doesn't have sidewalks and doesn't want them, and so I'm all in favor of not requiring a sidewalk.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a follow-on to Commissioner Thompson's comments, I'm going to take that similar position and add a few more thoughts. I think there are areas of our city where re-engineering and restriping the roadways, certainly for pedestrian access and safety, makes sense. I think it's key to talk about what makes sense. You know, we're not a new city where we laid down a new grid and everything is conformed and cookie-cutter and homogeneous. That's not what Santa Barbara is. So we have to look at not only neighborhood appropriateness and compatibility, but it's almost micro areas within a neighborhood. And I think that's what we have here on Edgewater. I think for those of us who have spent a fair amount of time on Edgewater, whether or not we live there, it has a very different feeling, being that close to the bluff-top, that close to the ocean, and it feels more like a path. And for us to overlay a city policy that in many areas of the city makes sense and is appropriate and effective, I think would not be an enlightened way for us to consider planning decisions in this micro area of the Mesa, in that part of the Mesa. So to the questions I asked about... So to the questions I asked about surface products or what we could put down in that area that would somehow allow us to further comply, whether it's with the ADA standards or approximate city policies, I'm more in favor of going in that direction. I, and it, and the 2307 property that was required to put in a sidewalk just sticks out to me like an unenlightened decision that we made at some point, and I don't think you take an area that feels almost semi-rural and feels like a pathway that someone just paved over, and I think that's what Edgewater looks like and feels like. I don't think what we want to do is reinvent it to fit the rest of Santa Barbara. So while we certainly, and we talk about this on the planning commission, and we know that applicants in general, they want clarity, they want consistency. We've talked about updating our zoning ordinance, et cetera. But within that, we have to allow for some appropriate flexibility in what gets built or what shouldn't be built in certain areas of our city. And so in this case, I too am not in support of requiring a sidewalk, no matter who has to pay for it. I can't see the city, quite frankly, with all of our capital improvement projects that just came to us with, Ms. Anderson made a significant presentation to us on the long list of capital improvement projects, mostly unfunded, but some funded for the city, to spend any money reinventing Edgewater just seems to me to be not only so far down the ladder, the kind of the food chain of what we should be putting our money towards in terms of capital improvements, it shouldn't even be on the list in terms of any reasonableness, in my opinion. So with that, I look forward to my other colleagues' comments, and again, I'm going to support the direction in which Commissioner Thompson has expressed. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I likewise agree with Commissioner Thompson's leading comments. I think the advantages of the lot line adjustment are very apparent to us. I think it really improves the neighborhood, adds consistency to the housing stock, kind of eliminates the, the non-conforming guest house, which is there now. So I think it has a lot of real positive attributes to it. So I think that's a good thing. I'm not in support of this sidewalk that has been proposed. I think it really, it flies in the face of the other goals for stormwater management and everything else. We're adding over 1,000 square feet of impermeable concrete while the applicant is doing heroics with permeable paving, rain gardens, and all the other things to reduce runoff. So it's going the opposite direction from the goals of developing bluff top property. So I wouldn't be in support of the sidewalk. It also exacerbates the privacy issue on that easterly side because now it puts the pedestrian closer and higher up by six or seven inches adjacent to the five-foot-high hedge, which is being offered with a modification to provide yard privacy. So I think it's really working against the rest of the goals that this lot line adjustment is all about. So I can't support the sidewalk irregardless of what the material is. And I do think that we should reconsider some of the conditions that are requiring the sidewalk and parkway and also the street light. I don't agree with the Cobra head that's being proposed in the current conditions. Thank you.
Ms. Pujol?
Thank you. First, I'll go through some of the modifications. The front yard modification and the hedge modification, I'm in support of and find no issue and find compatibility with those. On the lot line adjustment, this is where the sidewalk question comes up. So for me, first of all, I find the in lieu option to be quite interesting and maybe part of the creative solution we need in this area. I appreciated the arguments by both the applicant and the comments by the neighbor across the street, who's a longtime resident of the, of the area. I think that that's part of a good creative solution for the concern with suburbanization, say, of the concrete, the concrete sidewalk would, would add to. But I also, at the same time, want to be assured that the right-of-way along the frontage of these properties would remain unobstructed and available. Often, I have seen in the past that without an actual structured sidewalk and without a condition or some parameters in place about what happens to that area, sometimes there can be property owner creep out into that right-of-way. So in addition to, say, perhaps entertaining in lieu fees and not requiring a formalized sidewalk, I would also add that the condition should include a restriction on any obstructions to keep that area a clear zone for pedestrians. I know that in some cases, public works departments have used something like a six-inch maximum item, even though if maybe a tree or a bush that's in the way, it still could be an obstruction to a pedestrian in that kind of clear zone. So I would propose that that be added to any motion that might include the use of in lieu fees and, and not requiring the sidewalk. I don't believe that this is the project or the forum to discuss whether or not there should be road widening along Edgewater. There's no traffic issue. This project is not creating a traffic issue, and I see that as completely outside of what we are looking at today. So those are my, my views on the, on the sidewalk. And those items come up under the lot line adjustment. That's what triggers the sidewalk. And that brings me to my next item, also under the lot line adjustment, which is a topic we haven't had much discussion of yet on this item this afternoon, but that's the area of the bluff and the bluff retreat zone. So those, I believe, are discussed in section, they come up in sections B under recorded conditions agreement and also somewhat under section C under design review. But first, I'd like to start by saying that, and you can see it on this map, there are several lines as determined by the geologist that worked on the project and also the staff recommendations for the bluff retreat setback line. So there's a geologic top of bank, which is much further towards the edge of the bluff, and there is a bluff retreat line, which represents the 75-foot retreat, and then there's a six-foot setback from that retreat line, those three lines. So I noticed on the maps that those three lines are identified and called out on one of the two lots, but not completely drawn out on the second lot. So one of the things that I would recommend is that we assure that the lot line adjustment as it's being recorded clearly delineates all three of those lines on both of those lots. And from there, I would also recommend, because of our concerns with bluff hazards, because of coastal policy, because of sea level rise issues, looking long-term into the future, it's important that although there is policy and practice to not allow development within those setback and retreat areas, that these bluff top properties call for an explicit statement of that in the conditions. So I propose that we add a condition under the item B, recorded conditions agreement, that would explicitly state that within the retreat zone and the setback of the retreat zone, that no new development would be allowed. And it might be helpful even to add an example, because development in the coastal zone includes pathways, new vegetation, some things that aren't structures or buildings. I would also ask that something like that be added in to that condition. And with that, then I think we have a clear understanding for anybody who looks at the project, future owners of the project, of what may and may not be allowed within that area. Still on that bluff topic, under item C, under design review, I noticed that the opening paragraph starts out with the project, including the public improvements, is subject to review and approval by the single-family design review board, which is standard and, and understandable. But I would like to clarify here that what we're talking about in the bluff retreat zone is we're talking about geologic and biologic health of those areas. It's not the same as a design landscape review. So I would recommend that that be amended to make it clear that the single-family design review board would review the landscaping plans and improvements for the areas outside those retreat zones, not inside those retreat zones. And if you look through, there's a couple other language changes that I think should be made there as well, like item C1 says appropriate plants on the bluff. I don't believe it should be the purview of this single-family design review board to look at plantings on the bluff. That's more of the, like I said, the geology or the biology review. And then just lastly, I would just like to mention that I agree with Commissioner Bartlet's comments about the, the Cobra lighting.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. I also see a lot of the benefits of the lot split, as brought up by my commissioner, fellow commissioners. I think one big one in my mind is the removal of a carport that currently exists with open views of cars parked there and then being replaced by a, an actual garage with closed doors, setback about another 20 feet from the street. Currently, that carport is, I think the corner of that is just on the right-of-way line, and so we're moving almost 20 feet back. I think the other thing is for the corner of the prop, and obviously, we're parking onsite for two individual units versus one individual, one unit that has a carport now. We've got two enclosed garages. The other is, I think there's a lot, you know, we're talking about the corner, I think there's a lot of good things happening on the corner now from a visibility standpoint. The removal of the hedges, the new hedge is lower and setback further. There's going to be a, how can I say, a soft landscape feature running around the corner, which is the, I don't know if it's two inches or three inches high as far as the, one inch as far as the cover. I think this might give the appearance of widening the, the view in the corner versus it being more confined than it is now. I know we're not changing hardscape, but even after the curb goes in, I think the ability to have that landscaped edge not only softens things, but also would widen up that corner positively. I, I agree with Plante Commissioner Pujol that I'd like to be able to see something in a permanent nature on a condition that that does remain in that state, the landscaping you're proposing on the right-of-way property and condition also where it extends into your own private property, that that be done as well to try to maintain that corner if we, if we could. Sidewalk, I think, is problematic. I know we're in a position of, you know, trying to be compatible and at the same time comply with other general plan and other circulation element, et cetera, that we have to comply with, but I'm hopeful, based upon what Mr. Vincent said, that accepting the in lieu fee, that we're, we're actually making a decision based upon this specific incident and hopefully not setting a precedent, but, but feeling in our judgment, the benefit of the sidewalk versus in this location versus the benefit that can be done on location to create continuity, I think, is, is a positive. And hopefully, that passes muster from a, a decision point with Mr. Vincent that we'd be allowed to do that. That's the inference I had from his, from his earlier discussions. So I think the lot split is, is well done, well handled, a lot of benefits, and I think if we can control what goes on around the corner as far as the landscaping level that's proposed, I'd be in favor of not requiring the sidewalk and with the provision that we accept the applicant's proposal for the in lieu fee. Thank you.
So I too have no problem with any of the mods. The mods for the two garages, I think, are an appropriate improvement that will give you adequate parking off the street. The mod for the hedge, I think, is entirely understandable, takes care of your privacy The lot line adjustment, I also agree with, but what hasn't been mentioned here also is that the lot line, lot line agreement is a huge property gain for the applicant. You currently now have one lot that's unbuildable and one lot that's not in performance, and you end up with two lots that are buildable. So I think there are some responsibilities due there with that type of lot line adjustment. And I'll look forward to seeing how the, how the motion is going to be crafted, but from personal experience, I know that that stretch of the road in front of this particular property is one of the most unsafe roadways on the mesa. I live about 700 feet from there, so I'm a couple hundred feet outside my, my area of, of influence, but saying that there's never been an accident or never been a fatality there is perhaps because people get out of the way quickly. Hearing it described as a pathway, right now, the pedestrian pathway is a yield to the automobile. It's not a pedestrian pathway, and I don't think that's what it should be. That stretch of road is a key component of, of the coastal access down the steps, and it's been, I think, well stated that on both sides of the argument, that it's, that it's used by a ton of people on a daily basis. So without some type of combination of road widening, appropriate use of the right-of-way that allows some relief for the pedestrian component in front of that property, I won't be able to support this project. And we'll look to somebody for a motion if they took good notes.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? There's been a lot of comments made here, and I think there's probably been some sort of, I won't say unanimous, but general feeling about the direction the commission would like to go. I would ask if the staff could craft the appropriate language to modify the conditions of approval that they, they prepared, rather than us trying to do something on the wing here. And if it needs to, maybe we could take a slight adjournment while they do that. Would that be appropriate?
That though?
I think that would be fine. I'm not, I'm not sure that we'd need a, a big break to do this because, I mean, let me just try, because if we can get this done, then let's just do it.
Okay.
Okay, so I heard that there was a request for a condition, an explicit condition about not allowing development on the bluff top, and that could be one of the recorded conditions. That's, that's pretty easy. In fact, that's something that I think we're going to start looking as, as our template, at some temple language for bluff top, because right now, it's, it's sort of implicit in condition B1, but it's not explicit. So that would be, that's, that would be easy. In the design review section, under the appropriate plants on the bluff, that would be outside the retreat zone. And then under the, let's see, on page five of 11, D1E, the Edgewater Way Mohawk Road Improvement, it sounds like the consensus that I'm hearing, almost consensus, is that we would probably want to delete the part about the sidewalk, but keep the, keep the condition about the curb. And I haven't heard, I've only heard Commissioner Jordan, or Chair Jordan, talk about the location of that curb. We would ask for some, some leeway, subject, you know, something like subject to the location, the location subject to the approval of the city engineer as far as where the, the curb would go to the, and I think that would take care of, if we got it a little bit wider, that might take care of... care of Chair Jordan's concern about pedestrian safety, or a little bit of increased width, at least. And then, I also heard a request to actually put the bluff-top erosion lines, the sea-cliff, the top of bluff, and then the retreat line, the six feet away, put those on the lot line adjustment maps. And also to accept the offer of the INLU fee, right, instead of putting in the sidewalk. And that's pretty much it. We would amend the conditions to do those things. And then, unless I missed something in my notes.
Campanella.
Yeah, I asked the question whether there could be a condition relative to the corner landscaping, that that be maintained--
Right-of-way.
--in the right-of-way area.
Okay, yeah, on that subject, I had a comment. Sorry, I forgot to say. But Condition B4 has a landscape plan, a recorded condition that requires compliance with the landscape plan. So the landscape plan, as approved by the SFDB, would be what would have to be, continue to be maintained. We could ask the Public Works staff to see if we could get, you know, I'm not sure exactly the appropriate processes, but to get an encroachment permit for that landscaping and then have that included on a single landscape sheet, which would be, you know, as the, that would be required to be maintained. Mr. Vincent's got something?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, the landscape plan would be subject to the review and approval of the Single Family Design Board. The improvements that would be in the right-of-way would be subject to an encroachment permit that would have to make sure that those improvements would have to give way if and when, if ever, a sidewalk or some other right-of-way improvement were to be constructed by the city. So that's how that interface would work. The design and the plan would be reviewed and approved by the SFDB, but they would have to be subject to an encroachment permit with Public Works that would recognize the fact that that is city right-of-way and that if and when the city chose to construct public right-of-way improvements in that area, that those private improvements would give way.
Do you want to go ahead?
Different subject, but--
Maybe we're on the same subject, though. Who's on the same subject? Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Kato. I'm wondering if we have sufficient language of that, the last sentence in Number Four under landscape plan. If said landscaping is removed for any reason without approval by the SFDB, the owner is responsible for its immediate replacement. Would that not quite, is that insufficient for what we're talking about here?
Chair, sorry, Commissioner Schwartz. No, I think that, I think what I was trying to say is, I think this condition is, meets the needs that I heard from--
Okay. For some reason, I thought there was a--
--from Commissioner Campanella. I don't think it needs to be changed.
Reconsideration of that, okay.
But I just think that as we go forward with the landscape plan, we will have to get the encroachment permit. And I think Mr. Vincent's idea is that there has to be an acknowledgement among the commissioners, you know, going forward, that at some point in the future, that might have to be removed as part of a city project, but not by the applicant.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I would, two more comments on this topic is that I'm positive that the applicants will have a desire to maintain any improvements that they put in that location, simply because that's their front yard. Beyond that, also, the city, you know, Municipal Code Chapter 2211 requires the maintenance of any approved landscape plans. And so, once the landscape plan is in place, it is required to be maintained per the landscape plan. If they wanted, at some point in the future, to change the improvements, the types of plants that are planted, something that grows higher than the specified plants, then they would need to have SFDB approval for the change to that landscape plan.
Mr. Chair, if I could also add--
Yeah, but let me just pause you for a second, because at some point, the lights all lit up like a Christmas tree. So is everybody okay letting them go through the process and coming back to your questions?
Yes.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Just listening to Danny's suggestion concerning the location of the curb, it looks like the power pole will be the deciding point of where that's going to be. And I think it's just important that we also include in there that the asphalt is continued as part of that. We don't want the street end, then a two-feet-foot section of dirt, and then a curb. So it needs to be from the center line of the street to the curb, continuous asphalt, whatever that may be, maybe another couple feet.
Okay. And then, the other thing that I heard, but only by two commissioners, was the Cobra Head. And if that's something that the commission wants to, so this one's a little bit difficult, because my understanding is that there are city standards about streetlights, and not all of the streetlights in the city, the standard had been changed from Cobra Head to something else, these, those domus ones. My understanding is that for this neighborhood, Cobra Head still is the standard, but I hear that some of the commissioners want that to be, want this to be a different type of streetlight.
Could we not say per city standard, rather than specifying the type of light?
Yeah, so what I was going to suggest is something on the order of applicant shall install a streetlight on the existing power port, subject to the approval of the city engineer.
Per city standard?
Yeah.
Because there is a lighting plan.
Yes, there is, exactly. Mine is, it's just that our understanding is that Cobra Head is what the standard is for this neighborhood, but we'd have to really delve into that to see. So I would say we could just get, if it's the pleasure of the commission, we could just kind of get rid of the Cobra Head part and then just say city standard streetlight.
Right.
And I think that's all that I written down.
Mr. Bartlet? That was your question? Okay, Ms. Pujol?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to clarify some terminology, because the no-development zone that I was referring to, I think I heard you say on the bluff, but actually, what we mean is the bluff-retreat area and bluff-retreat setback area.
Yes, that's my--
Okay, thank you. And then, what follows from that, though, under Item C, I had mentioned that I do not think the Single Family Design Review Board should have the jurisdiction over the landscaping or the lighting or the irrigation system in that area.
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Pujol, the way that it works in the city is, we get, as part of this, the application that the staff reviews, we get the geology report, and all those considerations are put into the landscape plan, which has to be reviewed by somebody. It's not reviewed by an outside geologist. We don't have a staff geologist or a staff biologist to make those kinds of calls. So that goes to the Single Family Design Board with our, with the body of knowledge that we have about the special studies.
Mr. Chair, if I could follow up with that on the question? So in that case, what you're saying is, we go to that group, however, there would be clear delineation and direction to them that no new water-intensive landscaping, permanent irrigation, that sort of thing would be allowed within that retreat zone?
Correct, that's the purpose of C1, is to give them that direction.
Okay. And just then, that would be fine, just in one location on Item C4, where it talks about the irrigation system, talks about watering on the bluff edge to be kept to a minimum, the drip system shall be removed after one full season of plant growth. That's a bit nebulous. I could see if there had been some restoration done within the last year, that it would make sense to allow some temporary irrigation until they're established. But it wasn't within the last year, and I don't think that we should foster the idea that you could bring an irrigation plan to the subdivision review, I mean, the Single Family Design Review Board for that entire area. So I think there needs to be some deletion or work on that, on that section, and I'm fine, thanks.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two points. The Single Family Design Board does include landscape architects as a matter of the composition of the board, so they do have expertise in this area. The other thing, I have a question. Commissioner Pujol brought it up, and Mr. Kato repeated it. On my Plan Pages L1, both show the top of bluff and the top of bluff setback. I think you mentioned that it wasn't included and wanted it included, but on my Sheet L1, it's very definitely there in bold line.
Mr. Chair, maybe--
Ms. Pujol?
Yes, some of the lines are there, but if you look very closely, one of the setback lines kind of falls off at the property line. And so I wanted to make sure that these lines will all show up. It kind of fades into a topo line, but I want to make sure that all of these lines clearly are identified and show up when the map is recorded. That's all. The staff will check it when it comes to that final point, I'm sure.
Yes, and L1 is a landscape plan, so that's not the tentative, that's not the lot line adjustment map. We would put it on Sheet C1, which is the civil drawing, and they're not currently on there. So we would just make sure that those lines get put on that drawing.
Now, Mr. Kato, could you explain to me the, what you said about the right-of-way corner landscaping, how that process will work, or what the direction is being given?
Okay, the way that I explained it was, there is going to be a landscape plan, the L1 Sheets that you had, and that's going to, the way that I envision it is that that will include the landscaping in the right-of-way, and we will process, or at least have the applicants apply for an encroachment permit to allow those improvements to be in the right-of-way. And then that whole thing gets approved by the Single Family Design Board, and then all that is subject to the recorded condition that says you have to maintain exactly what got approved.
At this particular time, that landscape plan includes that little planting of short--
Yes, as I understand it, yeah, that's what it includes.
Technical term, right? Okay.
Chair Jordan?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Appleton did submit a landscape to me at 1:00 today, so it'll be included when they return to the Design Review.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? So we need a motion to make the findings associated with the discretionary approvals and subject to Danny's narrative that you heard. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move that we approve the project and the modifications and the coastal development permit as amended by the staff, with the conditions as amended by the staff.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I would be opposed. No? No abstentions? So congratulations, you have a project. This project is appealable within 10 calendar days. I said no. Thank you. I did say no. So we'll move on to our administrative agenda. And I did watch the staff hearing officer meeting yesterday. There were five items, all of them involved staff-supported modifications and nothing of controversy, so nothing there really to report. So other reports from commissioners? Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At Tuesday's ABR meeting, there was the last project on the agenda, is one that will be making its way to the staff hearing officer, and it was a proposal for a four-unit condominium project on West Alamar, abutting the creek. And this actually is a kind of a cleanup project to add four additional affordable units that slipped through the cracks on the Los Portalas project when that was for sale. And ABR, this is the second time they've reviewed it, and they are struggling with the Mass Vulcan scale. It's the only three-story in that particular block, even though it's surrounded by large apartment buildings, none are that tall. So it will be coming back to the Single Family Design Board again. Not sure if it's going to be before or after going to the staff hearing officer regarding the modification for the front yard setback.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you. Indirectly tied to my liaison role with the Transportation and Circulation Committee, there's been some discussion for at least a year now with MTD regarding Bus Line 22, which goes up by the Mission and also up by the Ellen Canto. And with the Ellen Canto having been shuttered for a few years now, the passenger volume on Line 22 has continued to diminish, and it's really on a lifeline financially with MTD. They've considered closing it or terminating it a number of times in the last couple of years, and just kept it going in hopes that Ellen Canto would reopen as soon as possible, well with, now we know it'll reopen, I think, within the next couple of months. And so Sherri Fisher has told me that they'll keep Line 22 open and running through this August, but if they do not see sufficient increase in ridership, they're really in the financial position of having to make that difficult decision to terminate it. Now, we'll recall that the Ellen Canto project was conditioned on, in part, the agreement with management there to provide either bus passes for their employees or equivalent. And yesterday, I discussed this with planner Kathleen Kennedy. She is going to go back into discussion with the agent for the Ellen Canto, Trish Allen of Suzanne Elwich Planning, and the Ellen Canto management to talk to them about how they could enhance the marketing of these bus passes or incent the employees to use bus passes. Otherwise, I think come August, Sherri Fisher and her team are going to have to make a very difficult decision about Line 22. So that's the status of that issue. Thank you.
No others? All right, we will be adjourned. Thanks. Thanks.